Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site, reviewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 20th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on our agenda is public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Dean Sands. I live at 25531 486th Avenue in Garrettson. And I wanted to talk about my neighbor, the Garrettson Gun Club. And I've got some handouts. If I can approach. I'll keep one. Thanks. Yeah, I don't expect you to absorb all this for the meeting, but if you're bored and want something to read later. I've lived at my address that's labeled Sands Home since 1999. I've owned it since 1998. The Garrettson Gun Club has been my neighbor that whole time. They started out as a small place, and in 2006, they were granted a conditional use permit here, and they expanded. I'm here tonight to talk about the rifle and outdoor rifle and pistol range. There's a lot of trap shooting that goes on there. I have no issue with the trap shooting whatsoever. I do have a safety issue, though, and it's been going on, oh, since I first moved there. I thought it would improve when they built the new range, and it may have. I'm not sure that it has. If you turn to the, I think, the fourth page, my problem is with bullets leaving the range. In 2013, I heard multiple ricochets on an evening, and I heard the bullets going through my trees. I talked to the gun club that time. They made steps to improve. In 2013, again, I heard a lot of shooting after dark, and it was guys thinking that they were practicing tactical operations, something like that. 2017, early in 2017, you can see Garrettson Sportsman's Club notes that there was bullets leaving the range. In September of 2017, same thing. Those notes are attached. The Garrettson Sportsman's Club discussed bullets leaving the range. November of 2017, again, I heard ricochets. I think it was a Sunday afternoon. I met with the club later that week to discuss the safety concerns, and that's noted in their attached meeting minutes as well. In the fall of 2001, I heard more ricochets leaving the club. I met a guy named Chuck Brown there. We found chunks of concrete and their impact berms. As I write on here, that incident was not documented, but the gun club was fully aware of it. And then again, in April of 2003, or 2023 here, I heard more bullets ricocheting out of the range. I ran up there, asked the shooters to leave, talked to the gun club, and at this time, I've had enough. I called the Sheriff's Department to file a complaint, and I called Planning and Zoning to figure out what the heck I do about this. So, I'm Garrettson Gun Club has been decent neighbors all the way along. They've made improvements ever since they've got their conditional use permit to make their range safer, but there's still bullets leaving the range. And I, you know, I talked to them. Well, what do you think we should do? I don't know what to do. I don't design ranges. I've never, I don't know. And they don't either. And that's a big problem. I don't think anything with any, I don't think a professional has ever looked at it and given them advice. What I am asking tonight, and I know it won't happen tonight, but I don't know if I have my terminology right, but I would like that conditional use permit revoked, recalled, reviewed, however that works, until the Garrettson Sportsman's Club hires a range consultant that could look at the design of their range and make recommendations to contain bullets, and look at the management of the range. Currently, there's over 1,000 members that go up there and shoot, plus people who by day passes. None of them are given any kind of safety instructions. Go up there and shoot during these hours. That's it. And so, some of the ricochets, I have no doubt, were from bad practices, but what do I know? I think some sort of range consultant that you could get through the NRA or the National Shooting Sports Foundation or something. I would like to have that range, the rifle and the pistol range, closed down until those consultants have made their recommendations and improvements have been made. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who cares to speak? Please state your name and address.
TJ Cameron, 2821 East Daybreak Circle in Brandon, South Dakota 57005. I'm not here to speak about the gun club, but I happen to be a member. I just thought I would let the Commission know that the key cards lock out at 8:00 PM at night, and that's for the rifle and handgun range. So unless somebody's illegally shooting, which would, I would think, in my opinion, you would call the sheriff in that matter, you can't even access the rifle range or the handgun range after 8:00 PM during the weekdays. I think it's 9:00 in the summer on the weekends, but when you scan your key card, you have actually a plastic access card. It keeps track of which person tried to get in. Also, I just, not why I'm here tonight, but I thought I'd share that information. Thank you.
Then we'll move on. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the Commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 24th, 2023 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the Planning Commission or the audience. If any member of the Planning Commission or the audience would like to be heard on this item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the Commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approved minutes of the April 24th, 2023 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 23-18 to allow temporary fireworks sales on the property legally described as the west 700 feet, the north 825 feet. There is an exception of Johnson tracks and except A-track 40 times 100 feet east of Johnson Track 2 and H-1 and H-2, and the south 213 feet, the north 825.5 feet, east 129 feet, the west 204 feet, northwest quarter, and except Swenson's addition Lot 1, and except Holden's addition to Corson, end of exception, and the south 6 feet, east 37 feet, Lot 1, Block 1, Holden's addition to Corson, Village and Swenson's addition Lot 1. There is an exception of H-1, end of exception, northwest quarter, northwest quarter, all in Section 26, Township 102 North, Range 48 West. That is in Brandon Township. Petitioner is Expulsive Ventures. Property owner is Quentin Johnson. It's located at 26014 482nd Avenue. Does anyone from the audience or the Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item? Item number three, conditional use permit 23-19 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 5,296 square feet on the property legally described as Lot 1, Track 1, Richards addition, northeast quarter, Section 17, Township 103 North, Range 50 West. That's in Lyon Township. Petitioner and property owner are the same, Justin Murphy. That is located at 25221 466th Avenue. Any from the audience or Planning Commission wish to remove this item or to be heard on Item number four, conditional use permit 23-20 to transfer one building eligibility from the northwest quarter, southwest quarter, to the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, and to make one building eligibility available to the northeast quarter, southwest quarter, all in Section 5, Township 101 North, Range 51 West. That is in Wall Lake Township. Petitioner is Orin Guidel. He's a property owner in 46134 263rd Street. Anyone from the audience or Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item? Item number five, conditional use permit 23-21 to expand the mini storage facility on the property legally described as Track 3, Ovens addition, to include the property legally described as Track 4, Ovens addition, all in the west half, northeast quarter, Section 1, Township 103 North, Range 50 West. That is in Lyons Township. Petitioner and property owner is Performance Properties Management LLC, and that is located 1.5 miles west of Baltic at I-229 and 250th Street intersection. Anyone from the audience or Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further questions or comments? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you are free to go.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office again. I just wanted to update you under old business regarding the Mueller pallets conditional use permit 2314, which was approved at the Planning Commission level last month in April. It did go to the County Commission on May 16th, and at that point, the petitioner requested that the item be deferred so that they could work with the city of Sioux Falls, either to get access onto the property or to find a new location for the operation. So, the item was deferred to August. So, there is no final action on that as now, but I just wanted to update you guys on that item.
All right. I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department, and I'll try to keep this short since we're getting later in the evening. It's similar to what we did with the joint Sioux Falls. We had a discussion about upcoming or potential ordinance and what we might want to be doing. I'm bringing to you today some discussion about shipping containers in Minnehaha County. Shipping containers occupy this kind of gray area of what are they and how they should be regulated in the county. And I took this picture while I was at a conference in Philadelphia of shipping containers being used along the waterfront there. But like I mentioned, what is a shipping container? Our ordinance does not currently address it or define it. The International Residential Code for Building Code does define it as a six-sided steel unit originally constructed as a general cargo container, and they're also standard sizes of 8 by 20 and 8 by 40. And why do people use these shipping containers? Or what we look at them or see them in the county? They're preassembled, kind of like a shed oftentimes used. They're inexpensive, and they're durable. They can last a long time and withstand a lot of wind and other pressures. They can be used temporarily or they can be used permanently through anchoring. They have the aspect of being a recycled use. A lot of shipping containers come from overseas, and then they stay in the United States, and they never leave with anything else. And then there's also the final part that some people kind of like the industrial aesthetic of a shipping container stuff. Kind of concerns about shipping containers have been seen in the county. As opposed to some people liking them, other people find them unsightly. There's also some safety construction, safety considerations for it. How are they anchored? Are they built to withstand snowloads? What happens to the integrity of the structure when you cut a window or a door into it? Those sort of things can, yeah, are, some of those things are addressed in the building codes. Other things are not. There's also residual chemicals might be in the container based on what was in the cargo or what's built in the floor. And then another interesting one is for taxes. So, if you, if a property owner decides to put an 8 by 40 structure on their property and get a building permit, they have to pay for the building permit, and they pay annually taxes on that benefit of the property. And if you have a shipping container, people are putting them on the property. There's no building permit. There's no integrity of whether or not it's going to meet building code, and they're not paying taxes on it. So, how should we kind of move forward on that sort of idea on a portable shed, or is it a shipping container? I did look into some regulations about them, and I have them included in your packet from various different sources. I'll just highlight just Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls does not require a building permit for anything less than 200 square feet, so that 8 by 20 is just allowed on the property as like a shed. There is some sighting requirements. They have to meet some setbacks and things, but generally speaking, it's just allowed. Anything more than 200 square feet, the city does require a building permit according to the building code, which then triggers automatic engineering requirements. So, that 8 by 40 is larger than, yeah, 8 by 40 is larger than 200 square feet, so that does have the requirement for engineering. I would note that if we do move forward with like an engineering requirement, that may simply be enough to discourage use of these structures, or use of these shipping containers as structures. I have a nice little photo here of somebody using one as a house where they stacked them together and built them into a dwelling. And then probably the final thing we kind of want to discuss are here tonight is some questions of how we want to maybe move forward with some rules. I don't have anything to present for you for rules because I wanted to hear some discussion before I go drafting something. But some considerations should be, how should it be regulated as a building and use it, work it through the building code? Many counties' building code requires a building permit, anything larger than 120 square feet. So, we even capture that 8 by 20 as far as building size. That 8 by 20 would require a building permit. Or is it just going to be considered personal property where you can place it out there like a lawnmower, and as long as it's not dilapidated, we'll let it stay on the property? How would we regulate unsightliness if we wanted to include anything like that? Does it need to maintain paint? Is rust a dilapitation of the structure? Should the rules change for a zoning district? Do we incorporate them differently, industrial versus agricultural versus residential? Or parcel size, if you have an ag property that's a one-acre lot, that's a lot of record that was subdivided into many lots versus a ag property that's 40 acres or even 20 acres? And then, should there be any changes between temporary versus permanent use, if there's going to be any kind of distinctions between those two durations of the use of the project? And I guess that's really where I'm ending my presentation, is just kind of a discussion on where we might want to go forward with this. So, is there any questions?
Kevin, aren't those larger units, aren't they already engineered? Because, I mean, they're shipping a lot of pretty heavy things in there. And I would guess they're probably already engineered to withstand a lot.
Yes, and in my research on it, yes, they are engineered to withstand a lot, and a lot of them have plates that will say how much like crush weight there is, and they're oftentimes engineered at the corners. And that's where their primary strength is at. So, you have a strong floor, and then the corner posts kind of stack the one unit to the next. So, yes, they are very durable and strong, although if I go back to, say, this photo, since they're engineered for being stacked on corners, and if you have a structure where you're stacking it not on a corner, is that going to maintain its durability?
So, Kevin, can you move it to the next photo? Because that, the next one is actually the, my building inspector, the chief building official, last week or a couple, maybe it was a month ago, brought this, someone wants to build this in the county, and is, would we require a building permit? That's my problem, is they're building a garage, basically, an open aired garage, but we don't consider right now those as anything but a shipping container. So, that's why I want to have the discussion. Do you, do we just look the other way? Do we not address it? Because to me, that is basically a carport with storage on each side, so I'm not sure what you want to do. But I know that if we do nothing, someday we are going to get someone complaining because they're, you're going to have hoarders. They're going to have 10 of them on their property crammed full of stuff. And then we're going to, then what do we do? So, that, I just need, how we want to handle this? Because I want to get up in front of it instead of being caught not knowing what to do because someone has 10 shipping containers, and he says, well, they're not sheds, they're shipping containers.
Madam Chair, for me, what do we do, Scott, if, on these buildings we can get from Menards or whatever, that just are, just a dome type deal with a canvas over the top? I mean, is that much different than this or anything with that?
We consider those structures, and if they're, if they have a footprint of more than 120 square feet, they get a building permit. Those hoop buildings, we require the building permit for those. People use them all the time for like temporary greenhouses and stuff.
Madam Chair, just my thought process on some of this is, yeah, I think that's the classification question, is it a building or is it personal property? I think when we get some of these structures and we get some complaints about them, I think the owner would try to talk up the merits and the benefits of it and that it's not unsightly. And I think if they're going to try to claim the benefit, they should also bear the burden of it being a building and having, if it's truly is adding value to their property, then I'm kind of seeing it as a structure, a building that should, they should bear the burden of the taxable value as well. So, I'm kind of of that dichotomy. I'm kind of falling on the side of is it's a building, and so long as it's 100, I don't see a reason why we'd change the number of square feet involved. But if it's over 120 square feet, which sounds like both the main standard sizes would be, I think I kind of want to walk down that logic with you of how, what implications would that be, and how would we regulate it going forward? But I think we're going to have more control over the issue of if we deem it a building.
I guess the one thing I would, I didn't cover very quick, very much, there are a number of examples where, as you see on here, that there's municipalities in places that have just strictly prohibited it, where they say, okay, we're just not going to deal with shipping containers, maybe on a temporary basis, and this is how you proceed with a temporary placement. That's also an option.
I think that we also need some sort of control over that, though, rather than just letting it happen. Could even pose a safety issue depending upon whatever they're putting in there. And let's hope they're not trying to live in them as well, because that happens, whether some of you realize what happens in this city or not, we're seeing a lot of it. I think we need to have some sort of guidelines with that so that we have a firm set on what we want to do. Just like Scott said, we don't want to be blindsided by something as well. I wouldn't want that.
Would you like us to work on an ordinance, bring back an ordinance that identifies them as being structures, and then we can regulate them? That's really going to be the, I think, the easiest answer. And that way, we would have a review of them, and that, and we can start working on an ordinance that will identify them as, I think we're going to need to amend the zoning ordinance that specifies that they are structures, that they can be used as structures, but you have to get a building permit, and that would then perhaps trigger review. Maybe we indicate that we would, that they have to be reviewed. I don't know. Why don't, but I'm getting the sense you want to move ahead with allowing them to be used, but probably issuing a building permit so they can be tracked and taxed, and it's just fair. And that way, we don't have, you know, they're meeting the setbacks, they're anchored. Because that's the other thing, is, you know, you get a deratio or a tornado, and if they're not anchored, they're going to go flying. So, that way, it's a safety issue, too. So, we can work on something and bring it back. Is that what you'd like then, generally?
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I've seen pictures of them in magazines. Were they?
Oh, sorry. I've seen pictures of them in magazines where they have been used for like tiny homes. And treating them as a structure allows us to have, to make sure they're safe. And if their people are going to try and inhabit them, then we know they're living in a safe dwelling, or if they want, it might regulate lot size about where they could be. So, I think it's a good plan. Thank you.
Doug, did you have a comment?
Becky pretty much said what I was going to say, but no, I think we need to get a handle on it before it gets out of hand in the county. And, you know, it's, everybody's, everybody pushes things to the limit, you know, so we really do need to set some parameters.
Okay. I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
After the public presentation about the concerns with the gun club, I guess I was thinking about the situation we had from Valley Springs several years ago.
The Brandon Gun Club?
The Brandon Gun Club. And I know as a Commission, we ended up helping them, I don't know if I would say Scott and his staff helped them to come to some kind of an agreement so things were more safe or safer. So, I would hope that maybe we could think about that, or, I mean, stray bullets are not a good thing. And I know that in that other situation, people had them coming to their home, the bullets were landing in their homes. So...
Becky, thank you for bringing that up. Because I was thinking the same thing, you know, when, you know, you first hear something, is it just a, or is it a neighbor that's maybe tired of hearing the gun range? But if you start reading the packet, you know, by their own admission, the Sportsman Club admits that bullets are leaving the range. So, you know, are we then have some responsibility probably to address that?
Well, the appropriate thing to perhaps do would be to... Well, the appropriate thing to perhaps do would be to, first of all, send them a letter. I mean, there's a couple of options. We can send them a letter advising them that we've received complaints that there's bullets leaving the property and that's not allowable. That's once, that's one option. The other option is you can recall the conditional use permit, bring them in here and have them explain what's going on, but that would need to be a motion from you to form, to have that conditional use permit recalled to discuss this. But typically we recall, we only recall conditional use permits if they're not meeting the conditions. And I think, I doubt there's a condition that says no bullet shall leave the property. It's implied. So I'd have to, maybe we would need to discuss that with, with our state's attorney on what we should be doing with this. Because it just came up a couple of days ago. They, I think Kevin can, a couple of weeks ago, it just contacted Kevin recently.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, and my only comment on that procedurally is I'd, I'd like staff to reach out to them to get their side of the story before we take, get too out over our skis and recalling something. So I think it's just fair procedure to, to reach out and ask them and see if they truly are aware of the underlying issues and then we can take appropriate action from there. So appreciate it.
Okay. Hey, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
902.
902. It's 903.
Jesus.